God bless you this morning. We're gonna do something a little different, amen. You can just stay seated until you're ready to worship. When you're ready to worship, stand up and worship the Lord, amen. Amen. He's my Lord. There is no other one who can calm the storms of life like my Lord. He gives rest to the weary brings new light to the hopeless. There's no doubt about it, he's my Lord. He's my Lord. There is no other one who can calm the storms of life like my Lord. Oh, he gives rest to the weary brings new light to the hopeless. There's no doubt about it, he's my Lord. He gives rest. He gives rest to the weary brings new light to the hopeless. There's no doubt about it, he's my Lord. He's my Lord, brother Luther, if you come. He's my Lord. Let's get a Lord of wave offering. There is no other one who can calm the storms of life like my Lord. He gives rest to the weary brings new light to the hopeless. There's no doubt about it, he's my Lord. Allow him to be his Lord, amen. Love you this morning. It's good to be here. Amen. If you have a burden upon your heart, make that known, uplift it, him. I just wanted to give a little testimony of my son. Many of the home people know, maybe some people that are streaming. He's about 95 days sober, still working, still doing great. He just needs a little direction and guidance where he's at. So I want you to remember that for me this morning. Amen. If you just remember, your offspring is yours. Don't ever let go, regardless of what it looks like. Don't ever let go. Amen. Let's pray. Father, we love you this morning. Lord, I'm just so thankful, not for anything that I've done, but Lord, what you do and how you watch over me and your children, Father. And it always works out for the best. Thank you for that. Lord, we just come together, Father, that you could be in our midst, touch our hearts each and every one, Father. Lord, as we collect the ties and offerings, we pray that you would just bless, that you would forgive, magnify the offerings, Father, for your kingdom. And Lord, as that, one of the five full ministry gifts steps behind this desk this morning. I know his heart's desire, Lord, would be just to get out of the way and allow that gift. And that's what we pray, Father. Your gift would have preeminence. You would speak to us, Father. We are expecting nothing less. We love you this morning. We praise you in Jesus Christ's name. Amen. He's my Lord. Let's just worship for a few more minutes. He's my Lord. There is no other one who can calm the storms of life. He gives rest. Brings new life. No doubt about it, he's my Lord. With a loud voice, let's sing, "He's my Lord." He's my Lord. Yes. There is no other one who can calm the storms of life like my Lord. Oh, he gives rest to the weary brings new light to the hopeless. There's no doubt about it, he's my Lord. Harmony, know this. My God is awesome. He can move mountains, keep me in the valley, and hide me from the rain. My God is awesome. He heals me when I'm broke, strength where I am weak, and forever he's the savior. My God is awesome. Yes, he is. He's awesome. Awesome. My God is awesome, Savior of the whole world, giver of salvation. By hand stripes, I'm healed. My God is awesome. His grace. Praise his holy name. Say, "My God is awesome." Yes, he is awesome. He's awesome. He's awesome. My God is awesome. Oh, he is. He's awesome. He's awesome. He's mighty. He's mighty. He's mighty. He's mighty. Awesome. Awesome. He's holy. He's holy. He's holy. He's holy. He's holy. Yes, he's awesome. Say, "My God." Oh, my God, he's awesome. Awesome. My God is awesome. With mouth, keep me in the valley, and hide me from the rain. My God is awesome. He heals me when I'm broke, strength where I am weak, and forever he's the savior. My God is awesome. Say, "He's awesome." He's awesome. Awesome. One more time, he's awesome. Say, "He's awesome." He's awesome. Awesome. My God is awesome. Amen. How many know he's a provider? He's a protector, amen. Awesome and awesome, amen. Let's sing a little bit of "Let the Worshipper Arise," P F. Let the worshipper arise. Let the sons and daughters sing. I surrender my all. I surrender to the King. Let's sing it again, "Let the Worshipper Arise." Let the worshipper arise. Say, "Sons and daughters sing. I surrendering my all. I surrender to the King." Let's sing it one more time, "Let the Worshipper Arise." Let the worshipper arise. Say, "Let the sons and daughters sing. I surrendering my all."
I surrendering my all.
Lord, I surrender.
I surrender to the King.
Father, I see that you are drawing a line in the sand. I wanna be standing on your side, holding your hand. Let your kingdom come. Let it live in me. This is my prayer. This is my plea, "Let the Worshipper arise." Let the sons and daughters sing. I'm surrendering my all. I surrender to the King. Father, I hear it growing louder, the song of your redeemed, as the saints of every nation are awakening to sing. From our hearts there comes an anthem, oh, hear the angels ring. This is my prayer song, a song tonight. Let the Worshipper arise.
Let the sons and daughters sing.
I surrender my all. I surrender to the King. Let the Worshipper arise.
Let the Worshipper arise.
Let the sons and daughters sing. Lord, I surrender my all.
I surrendering my all.
I surrender to the King. One more time, "Let it arise."
Let the Worshipper arise. Let the sons and daughters sing. I surrendering my all. I surrender to the King. Hallelujah.
Let's sing one more, man, then we're gonna let you have your seats. Let's sing a little bit of "Let It Rise." Let the glory of the Lord rise among us, amen. Let's put our hands together for the Lord. Let the glory of the Lord rise among us. The glory of our Lord rise among us. Son of our Lord, say, "Rise among us. Let it rise." Let the songs of our King.
Rise among us.
Let the songs of our King.
Rise among us.
Let the joy of our King rise among us. Let it rise. Let it rise. Let the glory of the Lord rise among us. Let the glory of our Lord rise among us. Let the praise of our King rise among us. Let it rise. Say, say, "Oh." Let it rise. Let the glory of our Lord rise among us. Say, "Let the glory of our Lord rise among us." Let the praise of our King rise among us. Let it rise. Somebody say, "Oh." Let it rise. Let it rise. Let it rise. One more time, say, "Oh." Let it rise. Amen. He may be seated. Amen. Brother Matt Watkins, amen. There's a request for you to give us a song, amen. Okay, amen. We're gonna skip over him really quick. Let's go to Brother Steven Short. Amen. Let's give him a hand, amen. God bless you, amen. Come on, now, brother.
Well, the Bible tells the story, I'm sure you all heard, of Sodom and Gomorrah, and how God gave Lot his word that he would spare his family from the awful day of wrath if they would flee that wicked city. Don't look back. Now, the Lord had sent two angels to take Lot's family away from the destruction that the town was gonna see. They said, "Don't look behind you as you leave this dreaded place." But that request turned out to be more than Lot's life could take. She couldn't bear to turn her back on all those things she had. So she traded off a lifetime for a memory that didn't last. Don't look back. It ain't worth what you'll be paying. There's nothing that you're gonna find back there worth taking. Keep moving on, my friend. Forget about where you've been. Learn to listen. Leave behind the past. And don't look back. Now, God's children must be careful as they live from day to day, 'cause the devil will have you looking back and heading the other way. All those memories from the old life aren't easy to forget. And before you know, they'll have you making choices you'll regret. Just remember all the damage just one look can do. If you wanna keep moving forward, you'd better make sure that you don't look back. It ain't worth what you'll be paying. There's nothing that you're gonna find back there worth taking. Keep moving on, my friend. Forget about where you've been. Learn to listen. Leave behind the past. And don't look back. Don't look back. It ain't worth what you'll be paying. There's nothing that you're gonna find back there worth taking. Keep moving on, my friend. Forget about where you've been. Learn to listen. Leave behind the past. Don't look back. Keep moving on, my friend. Forget about where you've been. Learn to listen. Leave behind the past. And don't look back.
Amen. Amen. Let's give Brother Matt a hand, amen. I see a lot of new faces to me, but I see one in particular, Brother Brian, right there, my buddy. Long time, I don't know how you snuck in here and you're not sitting over there. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to get you to give us a little song selection, even if you have me sing something with you, but we gotta get you to play something for us, amen. Amen. Let's give Brother Matt a hand again, amen.
Amen. God bless you this morning. Join the presence of the Lord. Amen. It was requested I would sing this song. And today has a very special meaning today, and I don't wanna, I won't share the testimony, all the testimony now, but the Lord did something really, really special last night at the banquet. I'm gonna testify to Brother Darryl about it, but the Lord used him in such a specific way for just one individual. I'm sure more, all the young people were blessed. We watched something very supernatural take place last night of the young girl's life, who'd just been battling something, just in those teenage years, some of the hardest years. And the devil had just been battling her. We came up against it even before the meeting started, watching the devil already working. But then the Lord sent a servant, and he yielded himself to the Holy Spirit. And he just went right down the exact channel, never knew nothing, didn't know anything at all, and just called out the spirit that had been plaguing the sister's mind. Last night about 1:00 in the morning, we sat on these chairs, just weeping and crying with her, and she said, "I'm free. I'm free of it today. I don't battle it anymore." And we just wept with her. So I just wanna give the Lord a hand clap of praise for that. I haven't sang this song in a while, so, but it was requested to sing it. The man who wrote this song said that if he had the devil in a room, this is what he'd tell him. You might not recognize me now. The chains that once surrounded me are laying on the ground. You can't keep digging up my past. You may have had a laugh or two, but you won't get the last. You might not recognize me now. Maybe I was blind, but now I see. Maybe I was bound, but now I'm free. And maybe you need reminded, you're under my feet. Maybe you're a lie that I... Let me start up. Maybe I was blind, but now I see. Maybe I was bound, but now I'm free. And maybe you need reminded, you're under my feet. Maybe you're a lie that I don't need. Maybe you should listen when I speak. Maybe you need reminded, you're under my feet. If you want scars, I'll show you scars. All the wounds upon the hands of light that pierced the dark. If I were you, I'd be afraid. Maybe this is where we say farewell. Maybe you should crawl on back to hell. Maybe you need reminded you're under my feet. You're under my feet.
Amen. We're gonna get Brother Aaron and Sister Lindsay a gilreif, amen, this morning to give us a special. Amen. Let's have them come, amen. Let's give them a hand, amen. God bless you.
I was a wandering soul, traveling a well-worn road. A sinner so far from home. No second chance. Inside, I heard you call my name. I felt you lift my shame. And I made a vow that day that I'd spend the rest of my life loving my Jesus, showing my scars, telling my story of how mercy can reach you where you are. And I pray the whole world hears the cry of my heart, is to see all the ones I love, loving my Jesus. When all is said and done, when my last song's been sung, I stand face to face with the one who gave all for me. May all I have to show be all that mattered most, making your great name known. Let this be my legacy. Loving my Jesus, showing my scars, telling my story of how mercy can reach you where you are. And I pray the whole world hears the cry of my heart, is to see all the ones I love, loving my Jesus. When all is said and done, when my last song's been sung, I stand face to face with the one who gave all for me. May all I have to show be all that mattered most, making your great name known. Let this be my legacy. Loving my Jesus, showing my scars, telling my story of how mercy can reach you where you are. And I pray the whole world hears the cry of my heart, is to see all the ones I love, loving my Jesus. When all is said and done, when my last song's been sung, I stand face to face with the one who gave all for me. May all I have to show be all that mattered most, making your great name known. Let this be my legacy. Loving my Jesus, showing my scars, telling my story of how mercy can reach you where you are. And I pray the whole world hears the cry of my heart, is to see all the ones I love, loving my Jesus.
Amen. Brother Brian, come on. Amen. Let's give Brother Brian a hand, amen. Why should I feel discouraged? And why should the shadows come? And why should my heart feel lonely? Longing for heaven and home? When Jesus is my portion, a constant friend is he. His eyes are on the sparrow. And I know he watches me. I sing because I'm happy. I sing because I'm free. Oh, his eyes are on the sparrow. And I know he watches me. I sing because I'm happy. I sing because I'm free. Oh, his eyes are on the sparrow. And I know he watches me. And I sing because I'm happy. Oh, yes, I sing because I'm free. Oh, his eyes are on the sparrow. And I know he watches me. Oh, yes, I sing, I sing because I'm happy. Oh, yes, I sing because I'm free. Yes, I'm free. Oh, his eyes are on the sparrow. And I know he watches me. I sing because I'm happy. Oh, I sing because I'm free. Oh, his eyes are on the sparrow. And I know he watches me.
Oh, give the Lord some praise. Glory. God bless you all this morning. What an epic time to be a Christian. What an atmosphere, amen, of worship and praise, amen. Are you happy to be a Christian?
Yeah.
You ready for the Word?
Yeah.
Amen. Have you put your order in? Say, "Lord, here's my need today."
Amen.
"Amen, I have great needs." We welcome all of you today. We're gonna get immediately right out of the way, and we'll sing one more song as we invite Brother Darryl to come. But let me just say how happy we have been to have all of you visitors here, amen, and to have Brother Darryl and Sister Cheryl here with us has just been beautiful, amen. It's just been wonderful. We had such a good time Friday night, and then last night at the, at the youth banquet. My, I just sat in amazement to see the Word, amen, go right down into the hearts of all the young people. Did you enjoy that, young people? Amen. Let Brother Darryl know it. Raise up your hand, wave them at him, jump up and down. Say, "We enjoyed it, amen. Praise the Lord." Amen. We just felt the power of God move, and I'm glad to hear about that testimony, amen, from last night. I imagine there's more than one who could say, "I have had an effect," amen, from the Word that's been preached, amen. God bless you. I wanna just give a, a great big appreciation to everybody who's made these meetings possible. We have teams that have worked on this for months now, and my goodness, where would I even start? I, I just, I just wanna say to the team, "You know who you are." My goodness, all the work that was put in to make these meetings possible, amen. Our ministry teams, our worker teams, and Brother Ken and Sister Anita and Sister Caitlin opening up their business so that we could come in last night like we were royalty, amen. I just so appreciate all the workers that were there, all the ones that have made this possible. I think about Brother Brad and Sister Sarah always constantly opening up their home to house and care for God's servants and His family, and all the musicians and everybody that's made all of this possible, amen. I would like for you all to give our many working teams a hand this morning. Amen. Praise the Lord, amen. Now comes the best part, the Word of God. My heart is just bursting with anticipation. I've seen God move so much already, Friday and Saturday. My, I'm just, as they say, licking my chomps, amen. To me, it's a seven-course meal, amen, and I just so appreciate the Lord for it, amen.
Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together worthy, all together wonderful to me. Oh, here I am to worship.
Here I am.
Here I am to bow down.
Hallelujah.
Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together worthy, all together worthy, all together wonderful to me. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're all together worthy, all together worthy, all together wonderful to me.
Hallelujah. Isn't he wonderful? I heard Brother David Zeiler say one time, he was in India, I believe it was, and he said he saw a man take a piece of wood and make a god. And he said, "I watched him pack that god around and set it down and worshipped that god." Brother David said, "I thought, 'I'm so glad that I don't worship a god that I made with my hands, but I worship the God who made me with His hands.'" Aren't you glad today, friends? We are wonderfully made by the hand of Almighty God. Before there was a star, before there was a moon, before there was an angel, God knew your name. He knew the color of your eyes. He knew the color of your hair. How could we not love a God like that? It's wonderful. Amen. If you have your Bibles this morning, Brother Andrew knew nothing, Brother Tony, I believe is his, knew nothing, just come out, sings one on their heart. I wanna read from Psalms 150 this morning, verse 6. I wanna speak to you for just a few minutes on everything that hath breath. Praise ye the Lord. Amen. While you're turning there, we just certainly like to say we appreciate Brother Brad and Sister Sarah, and opening up their home and allowing us to stay, and give us a nice place, and good fellowship, and food. And we wanna thank Brother Jason and his family in the church here for allowing us to come. And I know for this weekend, you could've had a lot of great men to come and minister to you, and yet you allowed me to come, and I appreciate that.
And trust something was said to touch you and help you. You know, sometimes we do things. I heard a story one time of a boy walking on the seashore and there was thousands of starfish had beached herself. And he was picking them up and throwing them into the water one by one. And this old fella come up and said, buddy, what are you doing? And he said, I'm saving these starfishes' lives. He picked up one, threw it in the water, and he said, son, look, said, there's thousands upon thousands of starfishes. You can never make a difference. And he picked up one and he looked at it and he threw it in the water and he said, I made a difference to that one. Amen. Amen, if we can make a difference for one, we've not failed. He would have went, as we preached Friday night, he would have come from glory and went to Calvary for the sake of one soul. That's just how much he loves us. Psalms 150, verse six, the Bible says this. Everything that hath breath, praise ye the Lord. Everything that hath breath, praise the Lord. Praise ye the Lord. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, Lord, once again, we bow in your wonderful presence. Lord, we thank you from the depths of our heart that while we were sinners, you loved us. And Lord, I pray this morning that just little simple message, Lord, it's really the only kind I can preach. But Lord, I pray that somehow it would speak to every heart and to every home, Lord, that we would leave here, dear God, with this desire, Lord, to worship you. For thou art God and you're worthy of our praise, Lord. Father, I pray for those that would maybe be down today. And Lord, when the service comes to an end, may they be lifted up. And those, Lord, that would be sick, may they be healed. And Lord, those who'd never known you, may they find that personal relationship with you today. Lord, those that need a revival, a stir and whatever it would be, Lord, when we leave the building, may every need be met. We ask you for this, Lord, because we believe you're able to do it. Dear God, we ask for Brother Jason and the ministering team here and the officers of the church, dear God, that you just bless them in a great way and use their ministries, Lord, that it may touch the lives here in Beaufort, South Carolina, Lord, that it be a witness that you're the same yesterday, today, and forever. Thank you, Lord, for these young people who's come and took their time. And Father, I ask, Lord, may there not be a one missing on that day when we all gather into our daddy's house. Until then, Lord, let us labor. We commit this service into your hands for your glory, for we ask it in Jesus' name. And the bride says, may God bless you, you may be seated. Forgive me for crying a little bit, but I've just told the young people, I believe God squeezes a man's heart and the juice comes out his eyes. I'm just so glad he can still squeeze my heart. That everything that hath breath, praise the Lord. Praise ye the Lord. The prophet of God says this, he says, have you ever noticed how the world gets into the spirit of the things that are in the world? They go to their ballgames and their sporting events and their dances and they enter right into the spirit of it. They don't sit there like a wildflower, like old dried up sticks, but they enter right into the fill of things and become a part of things. But oh, how they hate Christians for getting into the spirit of God's word. They call us fanatics, holy rollers. There's nothing that they won't do to show their hatred and their disapproval. Well, Brother Darrell, what are we going to do about that? You know, we're living in a time that everybody wants to be politically correct and we, you know, we don't want to hurt nobody's feelings. And so, you know, if they don't want us to get loud, if they don't want us to worship God, then maybe we should just kind of sit quiet because we don't want to offend anybody. You think that's what we should do? Well, here's what the prophet said to do. He said, there's nothing they won't do to show their hatred and disapproval. But he said, but ignore that. You can expect it knowing where it's coming from. Just go on and get into the spirit of worship. Our spirit is clean, it's fresh, it's real, it's sober, it's serious, but nonetheless, it's full of the joy of the Lord. The Christian ought to be just exuberant and full of his pleasure in the Lord as the world is when it savors and delights in its pleasures. Both Christians and the world are human. Is that not right? We're human and both have emotions. Well, Brother Darrell, I'm just not very an emotional person. That's simply not true. And to prove that, you hit your little toe on the way to the bathroom about one o'clock in the morning and everybody in the house knows you hit your little toe. You will become, oh my, you know that's the truth. You'd kiss it if you could get it up to your mouth. We're both human, we both, I made myself laugh, we both have emotions. But the difference is the Christian's heart, oh, I love this right here. The Christian's heart and emotions are purely on the Lord of glory and His love. While the world satisfies the flesh, while the world satisfies the flesh, their emotions is to satisfy the flesh. I'm not here to satisfy the flesh, I'm here to satisfy the one who created me, amen. And I'm not talking about, you know, I'm not talking about something that would work on our emotions, something that would glorify the flesh, but I'm talking about just loving to love God. What's wrong with just loving to love God? Amen, just thank Him and love Him and rejoice because I want you to know this morning, there is no God like our God. I said, there is no God like our God. Hallelujah. You know, the devil's going to try to tell you, now be careful now, you're going to get in the flesh. Honey, you ain't worried about getting in the flesh, I want to get out of it. Amen, you're going to be a fanatic or if you praise God before there's one sign of healing, then you're lying because you're still, you're still, you're still sick. So if you start testifying of your healing and you still got a symptom, you're lying because you're still sick. That's what the devil will try to tell you to do. Wait till you completely well and then give God praise, but that's not what the Bible teaches, amen. So if you praise God for your healing and you still got a symptom, you're lying because you're still really sick. But let us be like Joshua. Look at Joshua, the prophet said, before one rock ever came out of the building of the walls of Jericho, Joshua walked around the walls shouting the victory. For by faith he saw the victory. Now, when I was in the army, they gave me a steel pot for combat. They gave me combat boots. They gave me an M16 rifle with a banana clip that held 18 rounds, if I remember right. And then they gave me underneath the M16, they gave me an M203, which was a grenade launcher. Now, the reason they done that was because I was on the rifle range. And when I was on the rifle range and shot a couple of times, the sergeant said, you'll be the 203 man, you'll be the grenade launcher. You don't have to be accurate, just close. So the whole time I was in the army, I carried an M203 grenade launcher. I was on a 155 Hauser that fired a 105-pound projectile 18 miles on a max charge of a green bag. I know you don't know what that is, but that's what I was on. So they gave me all this stuff to defend my country. But there's one thing the army never gave me. You know what it was? The promise of a victory. They just said, here's the tools, fight the best that you can fight. But when I got into God's army, He gave me a helmet of salvation. Oh, glory to God. He shod my feet with the preparation of the gospel. He gave me the sword of the word and the shield of faith and the breastplate of righteousness. But God gave me something else that the United States Army never gave me. He gave me the promise of a victory. Hallelujah, he said, you've already won. Look in the back of the book, in your hardest day, in your greatest battle, remember, we have already won. Listen, I may lose a battle now and then, but we've already won the war. Hallelujah, knowing that the walls are coming down. And he armed his men and walked around and around Jericho for seven days, full of armor. Doing what? Because he was looking at the unseen. It was a promise that God made. How much the prophet said, can you walk around that wheelchair? How much can you walk around that cancer? How much can you walk around that sin shouting the victory? Hallelujah, shouting the victory. That God's given the promise, when you can see Him who He is invisible, when the pulsation comes into your heart and begins to pulsate, I'm the Lord thy God who heals all thy diseases. When you can see that, everything else weakens away, amen. When you see the promise of God's word and God's word cannot fail, then the symptoms don't matter, the pain don't matter. That's not what the Bible said. He said, I'm the Lord thy God who healeth all thy diseases, amen. Hallelujah, when the pulsation comes into your heart and it begins to pulsate, I'm the Lord thy God who heal us all thy diseases. When you can see that, my faith, everything else weakens away. I can rejoice in my healing because the word says I'm healed. I can rejoice in my deliverance because the word says I'm delivered. And God don't lie. God does not lie. Can I get a witness? Don't wait for signs and wonders. Well, I'm waiting till somebody sees something, I'm waiting for a vision. Don't wait for signs and wonders. Take God at His word. Prophecies will fail, come on, somebody. Visions will fail, but the word of God will never fail to us. It'll never fail us, amen. Oh my, don't wait for signs and wonders. Take God at His word and start rejoicing, saying it's going to happen because God said so. Said, I believe if every patient in this building right now would accept it upon the grounds of God's word and believe it and start testifying and praising God for your healing, the meeting would not close with one crippled person in here. Not if we have a prayer line, come on, somebody, not if somebody discerns our hearts. But if we'll simply take God at His word and begin to praise Him and thank Him for being our healer, our deliverer, our sustainer, hallelujah. Something will take place and not a feeble person will be in the building. And I say, why not us? Why not this morning? Somebody's going to fulfill this quote, somebody's going to manifest it, why not us? God is under obligation to answer His word. Here several years ago, I know some of you probably heard this, but it just come to my mind. I was in Romania. There's a young Romanian girl was born without a hip and she walked on a crutch. And when she walked, her leg just swung because there was nothing there, it just kind of swung. She'd stop walking, she'd have to take her hand and stop her leg from moving. And Brother Kenny Calf was preaching the morning services and I had the evening. It's on a Friday night, she come to the altar and she wanted to give her heart to the Lord. And so she tried to work that leg to get down on her knees and repent. And I thought, my God, how many people in America have two good legs and will never bend to the Lord? And I told her, I said, sis, you don't have to do that. Right here, right now, where you're standing, you can accept Christ. But she didn't want to do that. She wanted to get on her knees and repent. And she worked that leg till she got down and repented of her sins. Saturday morning after the service, they had a baptism and I watched that girl go into the river with the crutch to be baptized in the name of Jesus Christ. That night, Saturday night, she come back to the altar and she said, I want God to heal me. She said, I want to have a husband, I want to have children. Said, who would marry me like this? Lovely young girl. And I said, sis, you know what I'd do if I was you? I said, I'd quit asking God to heal me and I'd start thanking Him. I said, just get up in the morning, write it on your mirror, thank God for healing my hip. I said, every time you go to church, stand up and testify, thank God for healing my hip. And I said, you take this handkerchief and when God heals you, you send it back to me for a testimony of what the Lord did for you. Two and a half, three years went by, I get this email. Said, Brother Darrell, I've been trying to find you. Said, my name's Christina, didn't even know the girl's name. She said, I did what you told me to do, Brother Darrell. I went everywhere testifying, all the young people's meetings, I stood up and testified, thank God for healing my hip. Said, it got so bad that my mom and daddy said, you need to quit testifying, you ain't no better, you need to quit. But she said, I didn't do that, Brother Darrell, I didn't quit, I kept testifying of my healing. And said, it got to the place that even my friends were making fun of me. And she said, I stood up in a meeting, Brother Darrell, and I said, I want to thank God for healing my hip. And said, I heard one of my friends say, here she goes again. And she said, Brother Darrell, when I said that, I want to thank God for healing my hip, she said, my hip popped. And I threw the crutch down and I walked out of the building. Hallelujah, doing what? Thanking God for her healing before it ever happened, she was thanking God for healing her. Hallelujah. I was up at the BYC a few years ago and a brother came up to me from Romania. He said, Brother Darrell, do you know a girl named Christina? I said, oh, yeah. I said, isn't it lovely what the Lord did for her? He said, Brother Darrell, I was in that meeting. He said, I watched her leg grow out. The power of the God we serve this morning. Well, Brother Darrell, I've got a big problem, huh? You got a big God. Amen. Why not us, friends? When is the quotes, when's the quote? You know, the prophet of God said, can I just take my time this morning? The prophet of God said that it'll come to pass in the last days that men will be more like women and women will be more like men. That ain't a quote, that's a reality. Well, if that quote has become a reality, why can't this quote be a reality? Is that not true for his? If the prophet said that, that's a prophet said this, that if we start praising God and thanking Him for His healing, he said, there wouldn't be a feeble one among us before the service come to an end. I say, yea, Lord, let that be me, Lord. God told Paul, he's going to Rome and on the way to Rome, he was shipwrecked and on an island. And he got bit by a deadly snake. And the people said, he's a dead man. They didn't even call 911, they just sat down to watch him die. But Paul had a word of the Lord, not an emotion, not a sensation, he simply had a promise of God, you must go to Rome. So what did Paul do? Paul took the word of God over the symptom of a deadly snake bite. Because Paul said, how can I go to Rome and die from a snake bite? So what did he do? He took what God said over what the natives of the island were saying because they were saying, you're a dead man, Paul. They even said, this man must have done something terrible wrong to escape the sea and die by the snake. He must be a real deceiver, he must be really evil. But when he didn't die, you know what they said? They said, this man ain't a deceiver, he's a god. And what did Paul do? He had the word of the Lord over the poisoned snake. He had a promise from God concerning this promise of that you're going to Rome. So he took the word over the poison of the snake. He just pitched it over into the fire. And listen to me, young people, if the Satan and one of his serpents tries to latch on to you with lust or with deceit or with fear or with oppression, just do like Paul did, just pitch it over into the fire and keep on going. If he tries to hold you back, if he tries to tell you, you didn't get nothing, if he tries to bite you, just pitch him over into the fire and keep on going. Amen, hallelujah. Do you love him this morning? Amen. I tell you, well, Brother Darrell, I tell you, if I was healthy, I'd praise God. If I had no worries, I'd praise God. If I had no money problems, I'd praise God. Well, that's wonderful, that might be all right. But you see, the only problem of that is, the Bible doesn't say that. The Bible says, let everything that hath breath, praise ye the Lord. Let the sad man, let the happy man, let the poor man, let the rich man, let the sick man, let the healthy man, let the man on the mountain, let the man that's in the valley, let everything that hath breath, praise ye the Lord. Hallelujah. Well, Brother Darrell, is there any reason I can't get, I'm glad you said that, there is a reason. If you don't want to praise the Lord, there is one reason in the Bible, one excuse in the Bible for not praising God. So if you want it this morning, I'll give it to you. Some of you don't want to praise God and you want an excuse not to praise Him, I have one. So I'll give it to you this morning, you can write it down, put it on your refrigerator. The Bible says- The Bible says this in Psalms 115:17, "The dead praise not the Lord." So if you're dead this morning, you're excused. But if you ain't dead, the Bible said, "Let everything that hath breath praise ye the Lord." Listen to me, I've come for one purpose this morning. I've come not to complain, I didn't come to find fault, I didn't come to sleep, I didn't come to sit on the service. But I'm like those magi's. They said, "We've seen his star in the east, and for two years they journeyed through the desert, through swamps, through valleys, through mountains." But they come for one purpose. They said, "We have come to worship him. We may have fought all hell to get here this morning, but you're here, and while we're here, we might as well give the devil a black eye. We might as well let the devil know whose side we're on. You need to let the devil know when you come through that door, I'm not on your side, I'm on God's side this morning." I've come to praise him, I've come to worship him, I've come to lift him up, for he said, "If I be lifted up, I would draw all men unto myself." Hallelujah. Amen. Do you love him? Whatever state you find yourself in, just worship him. Just give him praise. Well, you reckon it'll work? Won't you try and see? The Bible says, Psalms 148, "Praise ye the Lord, praise ye the Lord from the heavens. Praise him in the heights, praise ye him all his angels, praise ye him all his host, praise ye him sun and moon, praise him all ye stars of light. Praise him ye heavens of heavens, and ye waters that be above the heavens. Let them praise the name of the Lord, for he commanded and they were created. He saith also, establish them forever and ever. He hath made a decree which shall not pass. He hath made a decree which shall not pass. Praise the Lord from the earth, ye dragons and all deeps, fire and hell, snow and vapor, stormy winds fulfilling his word. Mountains and all hills, fruitful trees and all cedars. Oh, don't you see, friends, when those maple trees and those oak trees and their palm trees out there blowing in the wind, you know what they're doing? They're giving God praise. Hallelujah. Fruitful trees and all cedars, beasts and all cattle, creeping things and flying fowl, kings of the earth and all people, princesses and all judges of the earth, both young men and maidens, old men. Well, Brother Daryl, I'm just too old. Well, it could be you're just too cold. I'm going home, I'm going soon. I love the Lord, he's so good. Both young men and maidens, old men and children, children, let them praise the name of the Lord, for his name alone is excellent. Let me tell you something. I am not the sharpest knife in the drawer, okay? Somebody asked me one time, "Do you speak a foreign language?" I said, "Yeah, English, it's foreign to me." I don't know a pronoun from an adjective. So I'm not, I'm just not, I just never learned it. I missed that day, week, month, whatever, I missed somehow what I was doing, but I missed it. So there's words I say, like last night, I was laughing because I said, "Crazier than a bedbug, or poorer than Job's turkey." So sometimes we say foolish things. But I want you to know, when you speak the name of Jesus, you may not know an adverb from a verb, but when you speak the name of Jesus, you are speaking an excellent name. For there is no name like the name of Jesus. Hallelujah, you can stretch it over a cancer, you can stretch it over a deathbed, you can stretch it over a blind child, and God will move at the power and the authority, every devil. Hallelujah, will bow at the name of Jesus Christ. Praise the name of the Lord, for his name alone is excellent. His glory is above the earth and the heaven. Let everything that hath breath praise ye the Lord. Brother Daryl, I'm sick. And listen, I'm not belittling that. I'm not, I really not. We have real problems, real sick. I know, you know what I was doing last week? Crawling on my hands and knees because my back was out. So I know we have real pain. I'm not belittling that. But listen, no matter how bad the pain is, no matter how sick we are, the prophet said, "Ever, ever sick Christian, while sick, has a thousand times more to be happy over the most cheerful sinner." You in your darkest day, your deepest problem, your greatest trial, have more to rejoice about than the man that's got 10 million dollars out here floating on a yacht in the, come on, somebody, because that's temporal, that'll fade. But what we're talking about this morning, it'll never fade. Hallelujah, for 10,000 years, we'll still be praising his name. We'll still be lifting him up, for I was lost and he found me. I was bound and he set me free. Come on, somebody. I'm talking about your God this morning. I may have pain, I may have sorrow, I may have trials, and we do. We have troubles. I'm not belittling that. Real pain, real pain. I've said before, and my back hurts so bad, have to try to get home from a meeting. And my back be hurting, the pain shooting down my legs, tops of my feet be numb, and pray to get out and pump gas to be able to get in the car and get home. Real pain. I'm not, I'm not belittling that. Do you understand me this morning? I'm not taking away from that, but I'm just here to tell you, no matter how great your problem is, how great your pain is, how great your sorrow is, you got a God who's greater. Hallelujah. I have a God who loves me, a God who saved me. Think about that, a God who loves me, who saved me, who predestinated me, who wrote my name in his book before the foundation of the world. Listen to me, young people, you live in one of the most darkest, evil, wickedest ages, when everything is at your fingertips. But let me tell you something, we don't feel sorry for you. You know why? Because you see, God placed you here. God chose to put you in such a time as this, and he never put you here to fail, he never put, come on, somebody. He put you here because he knew that you could take his word and overcome this evil age, that he could have a young man and a young woman stand there that day and say, "I overcome pornography, I stood against this gender stuff." I, come on, somebody. He never put you here to fail, he put you here. He could have put you in Jesus' day, Luther's day, Wesley's day, but he put you in this day, because he knew you could overcome. And we are sitting here this morning in heavenly places with every devil under our feet. I didn't know Brother Matt was gonna sing yet. I was setting a study before the service started and wrote it down. I've got it right here, just a little note right here. Every devil under your feet. He said, "Brother Daryl, I'm a nobody, but God takes nobodies, makes somebodies out of them." It's a body move, it's a body move. We need each other. You young people need each other. Don't talk about one another, don't make fun of one another, don't put one another out, don't draw a circle and leave somebody out. If somebody's out, draw a bigger circle, put them in. You need each other. And listen, I may not be the eyebrow in the body, I may not be the eye or the ear or the tongue, you know, I may be the skin under the little toe. And I tell you right now, I got an ugly little toe. But, but you know, if I'm the skin underneath my little toe in the body of Christ, if I'm that little piece of skin that's under the little toe, guess what? Every devil. Look down at your feet this morning. Everybody, look down at your feet this morning. You see your feet? You know what's under them? You know what's under your feet? I ain't talking about the carpet. You know what's under your feet? Every devil is under your feet. Years ago, when my daughter Allie was little, I was preaching up in Kentucky. And we standing outside after the service, talking to the brother. Allie was standing beside me, she back like this right here. And I was trying to talk to the brother, and Allie goes, I said, and I said something, "Wow, it was good to be here this weekend," she goes, and I said something else, she goes, I said, "Allie, what are you, you're destroying my ministry, what are you doing?" I said, "Allie, what are you doing?" She said, "It's a bug, Daddy, it's a bug." And I looked down, this little bug, it was running around, and she's trying to stomp it. Oh, you know what this morning, friends? The devil ain't nothing but a bug. And what you need to do, when he tries to raise up his head, you need to stomp it down. Hallelujah, you need to stomp him down. You need to tell him, "I'm the boss around here, you have no control over me, but I have control over you." Your back was broken at Calvary, amen. I'm not going down, I'm not defeated, I have the victory this morning. Jeremiah said, "Heal me, O Lord, and I shall be healed. Save me, and I shall be saved, for thou art my praise." If I'm gonna use my breath, let me use it to praise him, not to talk about my problems, but let me use it to exalt him, to lift up his name. Listen to me, I don't care how you feeling right now, just raise your hand and say, "Praise God." Praise God. Praise God. Oh, don't that feel good? He's worthy of it. Well, Brother Daryl, I didn't feel nothing. He never said, "Did you feel it?" He said, "Did you believe it?" Hallelujah. Can I have a few more? Listen, "Violence shall no more be heard in thy land, wasting nor destruction within thy borders, but that shall call thy walls salvation and thy gates praise. That shall cause thy gates praise. Call thy gates praise." Now, gates do two things. It keeps things out and it lets things in. It's an entrance and it's a blockade. And as the song says, "When you seem like you're all alone, praise his name." When you feel you can't go on, just raise your hand and say, "Greater is he that is within me." And you can praise the hurt away, if you'll just praise his name. Oh, hallelujah. Let your praise be an entrance into his, let your praise be an entrance into his presence, for the Bible said, "Our God inhabits the praise of Israel. He inhabits the praise of his people." When your back's against the wall, and it seems like there's no way through, and Satan has you cut off, let me tell you something this morning, young people, you've got a gate of praise, and you can hang that gate of praise, hallelujah, and step right through that gate into the presence of the God who created you. And when you begin to give him praise, when you begin to lift up his name, it just does something to you. My daughter struck by the train. Cheryl's daddy and sister was killed in that accident. Brother Jason come to the hospital in June, for he prayed for her, where she's on life support. And I took my little girl, she's only two years and nine months, something like that. She had, she had all kinds of tubes all in her body. Feeding tube in her stomach, couldn't swallow. And had a chair there in the room, and I'd take my little girl when she come off the life support. The doctors told me, if she even lived, she'd be nothing but a vegetable. And I'd put her in my arms, and I'd sit there in that rocking chair, and I'd sing, "In moments like these, I sing out a song. I sing out a love song to Jesus. In moments like this, I lift up my hands. I lift up my hands to the Lord." And the Lord raised her up. And when we came home from the hospital, she could walk, she could talk, she could see. And we came home, Brother Jason. And I sat down on the couch and I got her up in my arms. And you know what I did? I began to sing, "In moments like these." The situation, the moments, doesn't change who he is. It doesn't change the praise that's in her hearts. Because the Bible says, "And no matter what happens to us, all things work to the good." We may not understand him, but sometimes he don't ask us to understand. He just says, "Can you trust me?" Think of Paul and Silas. They was in prison, they were cold, they were hungry, sore, beaten, bloody, chained. And I can see Silas, you know, they beat him unconscious, just throw him into the prison cells. Paul in one, maybe Silas in the other. Silas begins to stir, you know, he don't, kinda don't even know where he's at. Last thing he remembers is Paul, so he goes, "Paul." And Paul hears his name, he kinda wakes up, he said, "I'm over here, Silas." He said, "Paul, I thought they was gonna kill us today. I didn't think they was ever gonna quit beating on us." "What we gonna do, Paul? What we gonna do?" "We're cold, we're hungry, we're in jail, we're beaten, we're bloody, we're bruised. What are we gonna do?" Paul said, "You know, this looks like a good place to have church." Said, "Give me a C for Christ." "Mm, I'm one of them, I'm one of them. I'm so glad that I can say I'm one of them. I'm one of them, I'm one of them. I'm so glad that I can say I'm one of them." And about that time, he woke up somebody down in the cell, and they, "Hey! We don't want none of that around here. You sit quiet, if you got something to say, if you think it's good, just nod your head. Just raise two fingers, that means hallelujah, and a nod is an amen. We don't want none of that around here." "Oh, my Lord, Paul, we offended that guy, what we gonna do?" Paul said, "Sing louder." Sing louder, amen. And they begin to sing again, "I'm one of them, I'm one of them." You know, there's something about family harmony? You know, Paul being the church age messenger, no doubt he sang lead. Silas, maybe whiny, I don't know, but we'll say he sang tenor. And God was watching in heaven, he said, "Gabriel, come here. Come here, Gabriel. Look right down there." Gabriel said, "My Lord, what is that?" He said, "Look, he said, "That's Paul and Silas." Said, "Paul, yeah, that's Paul, and that's Silas." Said, "Look, they're cold, they're hungry, they're beaten, they're bruised, they're in jail." Gabriel said, "Wormwood, come here. Look right down there, they're cold, they're hungry, they're beaten, they're in jail. That's Paul and Silas." And they looked over at God and said, "What are you gonna do?" God said, "You know, I think I'll just go down and join them." So Paul sung lead, Silas sung tenor, but God sang bass. And when God come down with that deep thunderous voice of his, like the roar of a lion, "Hallelujah!" When he be coming down there, and he begin to sing in that harmony, oh my, that deep voice, you heard some of these guys with this bass hat, and you coming down, you can hear them 10 miles away, boom, 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 boom. Everything in our house, boom, 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 boom. That's the way it was with God, hallelujah. He came down there, he begin to sing that bass, and the prison began, hallelujah. The walls begin to shake, and the bars come open. And God said, "You won't come to praise me? You wanna praise me, I've come to receive your praise. He's come this morning to receive your praise, amen." Hallelujah. In prison chains with bleeding stripes, Paul and Silas prayed that night, and in their pain begin to sing. Their chains were loosed, and they were free. "I bless your name, I bless your name. I give you honor, I give you praise. You are the life, the truth, the way. I bless your name, I bless your name. Some midnight hour, if you should find you're in a prison, in your mind, reach out in praise, defy those chains, and they will fall in Jesus' name." So a year ago, I was in a meeting, there's a young girl there, she's a cutter. She had all these scars on her arms where she'd cut herself. And this particular meeting, the Lord begin to move among the people in a great way. And she said, I, she testified of this later. She said, "I thought, Lord, I wanna praise you." She said, "I thought, Lord, I wanna praise You. I wanna lift my hand so much and praise You." She said, "But I'm ashamed of these scars. I don't want nobody to see all these scars on my arms." She said, "A voice spoke to her and said, 'Raise your arms and give me praise.'" And she said, "Brother Darrell, when I raised my arms to praise God, the scars disappeared off of my arms." That's the kind of God we serve, friends. Hallelujah. Come on, somebody, there is-- there is nothing that my God cannot do. You got scars in your life, why don't you just praise Him? Why don't you just let it go? Why don't you just give it up and give God the praise? You're still here, you're still battling, you're still pressing on. Don't let the devil hinder you, don't let the devil slow you down. Give God praise. He kept us in the midst of the fire, He'll keep us in the lion's den. Our God will keep us, we will-- hallelujah. We will not fail, but we shall overcome. Hallelujah. Oh, thank you, Jesus. I'm getting old. Not-- not only is gate for an entrance, it's also a defense for keeping things out. Listen to this quote. "Thanks be to God, you believe? You believe me to be a servant? You must believe now, sister, 'cause you realize your condition. You've got cancer and you're not gonna live long unless God touches you. Isn't that right? Come here, my sister. Kind heavenly Father, let Thy mercies be shown unto the woman. May she go from here tonight normally and well. I condemn this enemy with this church and these believing people. In the name of Jesus Christ, may it leave her." Amen. God bless you, sister. Go happy now, rejoicing. Go happy now, rejoicing. Thanking God, just believe, it's gone from you now. But when it goes out, it'll come back again. But if you just keep saying, "Thank you, Lord", if you just keep on rejoicing, it can't come back on you then. It'll go out, but it'll try to come back. It'll try to-- It's like I was telling the brothers. You come, you know, for prayer, you stand up, God instantly heals you of back trouble. You think, "My God, I'm healed, there's no pain nowhere." And out in the parking lot, you're testifying of it. You go to work, you're testifying of it, Monday, no pain, Tuesday, absolutely no pain. Oh my, you're just going down the road, just whistling, singing. You get up Wednesday morning, you can hardly get out of bed. You go to roll over, the pain shooting down your legs. Do you know what that means? Absolutely nothing. Hallelujah. We're not healed because we feel like it. We're healed because the Word says we're healed. Praise God. Your praise to God is a defense against Satan. Oh, let me-- Think about it, how it must please God that while we are yet in trouble, we begin to give God praise. "Oh, let not the oppressed return to shame. Let the poor and the needy praise Thy name." Not wait till you're fully recovered, not wait till you're fully delivered, but while you're yet poor, while you're yet in need, we can still praise His name, we can still exalt Him. We can give God praise in the morning, in the noon time, in the evening time. Praise Him on the way to work, praise Him when you go to bed, praise Him when you-- oh my, you can praise Him anytime, anywhere. He's worthy of our praise. We can praise Him in the good times, we can praise Him in the bad times. Tell me what Satan's gonna do? What do you think he's gonna do if every time he punches you, you praise the God who defeated him? Satan go, "Pfft." "Praise God!" That's not what I expected. Every time he punches you, you praise God, the God who defeated him. Don't look to your symptoms, look to your God. If anybody ever had symptoms, it was Jonah. My God, he was in a whale's belly. Can you imagine the smell? And only that, he was in the bottom of the ocean. But did he quit? Did he collapse in despair? No. He began to give God praise. That whale swallowed, you know, brother Abraham said, "When the fish eats, it goes right to the bottom of the fishbowl." And that fish, he saw Jonah out there in that water, he went, "Woo." That was a-- that was a Happy Meal right there. Six foot two twenty. Man, that was good. I wouldn't mind having another one of them. And he goes down to the bottom of the ocean, he's just sitting there, just, but Jonah is in this whale's belly. Can you imagine the smell? Hubcaps, boots, and everything else that he swallowed? Besides that, the acid burning in his eyes, stomach acid? He's probably the whitest man in the country when he came out. But he down there in the middle, in this whale's belly, in the bottom of the ocean, and he began to praise God. "I give you thanksgiving. I cried unto the Lord." He began to worship God. That fish is like-- Jonah began to worship God, he goes, "Wah." Jonah began to worship, he go, "Wah." "Oh my God, I don't feel too good." And Jonah began to worship God again. That whale said, "Oh my God, I've swallowed a holy roller." "I gotta get rid of this guy, I've gotta get rid of this guy." Let me tell you something. Oh, you start praising God, Satan will get you off of His head. "I don't want none of that boy right there. Every time I smite him, he praises God that much more. Better watch him, devil number one, better watch him, devil number two. They said, "That boy's crazy, he's lost his mind." Yes, we have. We've got the mind of Christ. We know what He wants done with His word, and we're not afraid to speak it. He said, "I cried by the reason of my affliction, unto the Lord, and He heard me. Out of the belly of hell cried I, and Thou hearest my voice. The symptoms never silenced His voice. Right in the midst of His trial, He started praising God. I will sacrifice unto Thee the voice of thanksgiving. I will pay that which I have vowed. Salvation is of the Lord." And the Lord spake to the fish, and the fish vomited out Jonah on dry ground." You talking about the Uber driver, that was some Uber driver. Listen to me, can I have just a couple more minutes, I'll close, but listen. Listen, "If praise can deliver a man from the belly of a whale, can it not deliver you from the gloom and the doom?" Anybody here ever been swallowed by a whale? Well, if God was able to deliver that man who was swallowed, cannot He deliver you? Brother Abraham said, "Now go on your road rejoicing, just start praising God, saying, 'Thank you, dear God. Thank you, dear God,' and all that gloomy feeling will be gone." You know, you get up, you get the blues? I don't know, I'm just-- Just start praising God. God likes to be worshipped. It isn't just exactly singing a song as we do, but it's singing in the spirit of worship, you see. Then you feel the Holy Spirit bounce back. God likes to be worshipped by His children. So if God likes to be worshipped, I say, "Let's make God happy." He said, "Now, brother Darrell, do you have any scripture?" "Thank you, I appreciate you asking that." If you want scripture, the people are supposed to come to the house of God for one purpose, and that's to worship, to sing songs, to worship God. That's the way God expects it. He doesn't expect us to come into the house of God to talk about something or someone else, or talk about one another, or talk about what we got to do through the week. He expects us to come to worship Him. It's His house of worship. "Praise ye the Lord, sing unto the Lord a new song. Praise Him in the congregation of the saints. Let Israel rejoice in him that made him. Let the children of Zion be joyful in their king. Let them praise His name and dance. Let them sing praises unto him with the timbre and the harp. For the Lord taketh pleasure in his people. The Lord taketh pleasure in his people. He will beautify the meek with salvation. Let the saints be joyful in glory. Let them sing aloud upon their beds. Let the high praises of God be in your mouth and a two-edged sword in your hand." What's he saying? I'm saying, "When you get into battle, just swing the sword and praise God. Cut that devil's head off." Listen, with David, that day when he met Goliath and he stopped there at the brook and he reached down and he picked up five smooth stones. Do you know why he got five smooth stones? He never got five stones in case he missed four times. He got five stones because Goliath had four brothers and David said, "I'll just kill them all." He's gave you a sword, use your sword. You don't have to back up from the devil, just swing the sword and praise your God. Praise Him for the sword that's in your hand. Praise Him for the joy that's in your lip. Praise Him for the happiness that's in your heart. Give your God praise. "Praise ye the Lord. Praise God in the sanctuary. Praise Him in the firmament of His power. Praise Him from His mighty acts. Praise Him according to His excellent greatness. Praise Him with the sound of the trumpet. Praise Him with the sultry of the harp. Praise Him with the timbre and the dance. Praise Him with the string instruments and the organs. Praise Him upon the loud symbols. Praise Him upon the high sounding symbols. Let everything, let everything-- Somebody say, "Everything." "Let everything that hath breath praise the Lord. Praise ye the Lord." David says in 1:15, verse 18, "But we will bless the Lord. We will bless the Lord from this time forth and forevermore." Oh, God, give me grace. If I make it that day in heaven and I walk through those gates, I don't want Peter to say, "Okay, you're Darrell Ward?" "Yes, yes, okay, now you need to go over here to this building on the right and learn how to worship God." Know, when I get there that day, say, "You Darrell Ward?" "Oh, yeah, come on in." Just go-- Just go right on through there giving God praise. "Everything that hath breath, praise ye the Lord." Well, I'm sick, brother Darrell, I've got a need. Why don't you just praise the Lord this morning? For He's your healer, He's your deliverer, He's the sustainer of our lives. Do you love Him this morning? Amen. "Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship in one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory hallelujah is to our God. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship in one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory hallelujah is to our God. Every praise, every praise is to our God." Here we go now, hallelujah. "Well, God, my Savior. God, my healer." Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Yes, go on. Oh, yes He is, yes He is. God, my Savior. God, my healer. God, my deliverer. Yes, He is, yes He is. Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship in one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Oh, I love this right here, hallelujah. "Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory hallelujah is to our God. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship in one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory hallelujah is to our God. Every praise, every praise is to our God. God, my Savior. God, my healer. God, my deliverer. Yes, Lord, yes You are, yes You are. God, my healer. God, my healer. God, my deliverer. Yes, He is, yes He is, yes He is. Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship in one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Sing hallelujah to our God. Glory hallelujah is to our God. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship in one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our-- God, my Savior. God, my healer. God, my deliverer. Yes, He is, yes He is. God, my Savior. God, my healer. God, my deliverer. Yes, He is, yes He is. Every praise is to our God. Every word of worship in one accord. Every praise, every praise is to our God. Thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord. God, my healer. God, my healer. God, my Savior. Yes, He is, yes He is. God, my Savior. God, my healer. God, my deliverer. Yes, He is, yes He is. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Do you believe that this morning? The Bible says-- The Bible says, "These sons shall follow them that believe. They shall lay their hands upon the sick and they shall recover." That's not just the pastor, that's not just the prophet, that's not just the evangelist, but that's you, young people, that's you mama, that's you daddy, that's you grandma, grandpa. That's every one of us, every believer. We can lay our hands on one another, because it's not us that does the healing, it's our God. He's the healer. But He said, "If you lay your hands on Him, I'll finish the work. If you'll do your part, I'll do my part." Do you believe that this morning? How many has a need in the building? How many believes no matter what your need is, your God's bigger than that need? "There, here's what I want you to do. I want you to lay hands on one another." I'm gonna let brother Jason come and pray this morning, and you believe God. We're gonna be praying with you. Amen. And now, listen to me now. Don't you pray for yourself. You pray for the person that's beside you. And don't just say a prayer because it's a sin to say a prayer. But I want you to pray that your prayer says between them and death, and it may very well do it this day. That's your brother, that's your sister, they're not heavy. They're your brother. One time in Germany during World War II, a soldier was shot up, blood pouring out of his body, shot through his hips, laying out on the battlefield, they had to retreat, the Germans was advancing. A young boy run out there and grabbed a man, was trying to bring him off the field. And the sergeant said, "Drop the man, he's too heavy. We'll come back and get him. Save yourself." But he kept bringing him. And the sergeant saw him again. And the sergeant saw him again, he said, "Soldier, drop that man, he's too heavy. We'll come back and get him later." The boy was just struggling underneath, trying to get him off the field. And the sergeant said, "As your non-commissioned officer, I order you, drop that man, he's too heavy." And the boy yelled back, "Sarge, he ain't heavy. He's my brother." He was trying to get his brother off the battlefield. You're not heavy this morning. You're not heavy this morning. You're my brother. You're my sister. Hallelujah. Amen. Let's pray. Now you pray for that one you got your hand on. That's what a prophet did many times on tape. Said, "You lay your hand on that one standing near you." And said, "Don't pray for yourself, pray for that one." Let's pray. Father, in the name of the Son of God, the risen Lord, our soon coming King, our Lord Jesus Christ, that name above all names. Lord, we have our hands laid on one another, and we're praying one for another. We're creating a chain of prayer and faith all around the building, Lord. We're praying right now for every deliverance, Lord. We're speaking out, oh God. These promises are yea and amen. Every word of God is reliable. Father, in every age, in this age particularly, Lord, we ask that you manifest, Lord God, that promise that you gave us for this hour, that special grace that we should look for at the coming of the Son of God. We employ it now, Lord God, and we pray for every sickness, every deliverance that's needed, oh God. Every need, Father, in every person, we speak it as done, and we give you praise, and we give you glory, and we thank you for it, and we call it finished. Oh, raise up those hands and call it finished and say, "It is finished." Raise your hands up all over the building. Say, "It's finished, it's done, it's finished. We have declared it, the voice of God has spoken. It is declared in this building today. And there's not enough demons in hell to stop it. Oh, we have accepted the Word of the Lord. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, friends, listen. It would be an insult to God for you to wait on some sign or some symptom. That would be an insult to God. Thank him now, it's already done, it's already finished. We're claiming it right now. Hallelujah. Oh, let's praise it, friends. No matter, no matter what tomorrow brings. Come on. What he has in store, I will praise the Lord. I will praise the Lord. Oh, I will praise the Lord. I will name Jesus. I will praise the Lord. Oh, no matter what tomorrow brings, what he has in store, I will praise. Again, let's lift it up now all together like an anthem. Come on, let me hear it. I will praise the Lord. No matter what tomorrow brings, what he has in store, I will praise the Lord. Do you believe the Word today? Friends, if you believe the Word, nothing can stand in the way of your prayer. Nothing, you have to own that. If you believe the Word of God, and it'll claim it and it'll confess it. What Brother Darrell was preaching today, he's proven around the world. I've seen it, I've proven it in my ministry. We had a service here, not maybe a couple of years ago. I probably put, oh my, I must have put 20, 30 quotes up here. Nothing but Brother Branham saying, "Now you thank him, and he'll let you get well. Now go from here thanking him. Now don't doubt, just start praising him." Quote after quote after quote after quote, where the people might not have felt it right then, but he said, "You just go from here thanking him." That's a prophet. That's what Elijah has instructed you. That's top secret intel the devil don't want you to know, but you know it today. Hallelujah. Oh, glory to God. My, I don't know if you've ever heard of the doctrine. It's a false teaching called secession. And John MacArthur, and different ones, and they claim that, you know, there's no more working of the Holy Ghost in the church. All the gifts are done, and all there's no more apostles, no prophets, and no gifts, and all of that. All we have is dry formal teaching. I just thought, "You poor unfortunate soul." And then I even heard Paul Washer, who I admire quite a bit more than John MacArthur. But even he was saying, you know, he said, "I'm not a hard, you know, on this whole thing of secession." He just simply saying, "I just am saying, I don't see it anymore in the modern day. I could never read God's Word and say it doesn't, it's not there." He said, "I just don't see it anymore." And I thought, and you've got a global ministry. I done seen the signs and wonders and God's gifts moving in this, just in this weekend. I say, "Come and see, oh hallelujah. Come and see." When the seals were open, the living creature said, "Come and see." Wow, friends, we've seen the gifts of healing, we've seen the gifts of faith, we've seen the gift of discernment. We've seen apostles, prophets, pastors, teachers, evangelists. What is it for? It's lifting us toward our perfection. Oh, we got a lot to praise him for, we got a lot to thank him for. Oh, hallelujah, have you enjoyed the weekend? My, feels like, you know, it feels like we get these weekend meetings, and now we need a whole nother one. Amen. My, just broke away all the devils of doubt. Friends, you go from here today, and you make that claim. I'm telling you, I've proven it again and again and again. And I've had God come down and do things for me, and healing and different things in a moment miraculously. No, there was even no thunder and lightning. Just the Lord said, "Okay, it's done," and it was done. That's, God's not complicated, thank God. Thank God, he's not complicated. My, you don't need a PhD. You probably just go further away from God with that. But I'm glad we have a simple gospel with simple faith, and all it takes is for you to receive it. I believe that more and more every day I live. My, I was telling, I had a sister come up with cataracts in a prayer line about a year and a half ago. And I just said to her, what Brother Darrell said to that young lady with the hip. I said, "Sister, just start thanking him. Claim it and go away thanking him." It's not, there's no question whether it's yours, it is yours, Jesus purchased it, it's already done. I said, "You just go from here and start thanking him. Don't even pay no attention to the symptoms anymore." I saw her husband a few months ago, and he said, "Brother Jason, she wanted me to tell you, those cataracts at this point are half gone, and they're going and going and going." I said, "You tell her, keep claiming it, keep claiming it, keep claiming it." Your Word has creative power if you'll... Brother Branham said, "Let a son or daughter of God take the Word of God, put it on their lips, and speak it." He said, "That is the same as God speaking. That's deity speaking." Do you believe that? Oh my, I thought about as Brother Darrell was preaching. And I'm not gonna preach after the preaching, boy, I'd sure like to. But I thought about Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. And that's the last thing they were doing going into the fire. Our God is able. Our God is able to deliver us. Know this, we're not gonna worship regardless of what happens, it makes no difference to us. But here's the last thing I want you to hear, King, as we're walking into your seven times hotter furnace, "Our God is able," that's a praise, that's a worship. They went in there singing and praising God, "Our God is able, hallelujah, to deliver us from the flame." Oh my, and they got, you know what happened? A Holy Ghost meeting broke out inside that furnace. And the fourth man came down, and they walked around in there in a jubilee. I feel like we've had a jubilee this weekend. Amen. Blessed be the name of the Lord. Praise the Lord. We're gonna let you go. Amen, although we hate to do that, but hey, we're gonna have some continued fellowship in the afternoon. If you wanna stay around. My daughter-in-law informed us that we've got plenty of leftover food. Let me make sure I get this right, I don't wanna... So yes, so there's plenty left over from the banquet last night. It's in a big roaster in the fellowship hall. Anyone is welcome to it. Now don't stampede. Don't stampede. If, there's a good amount, but not enough for everyone, so it's first come, first served. Amen. So she wants me to mention that, so, all right, I mentioned it. Now if you get trampled, you just weren't running fast enough. Amen, praise the Lord. Turn around and shake hands with somebody. Just express a smile and a handshake, say, "God bless you." We're so grateful for all of the visitors that have come, made these meetings possible. So thankful for all of you. So thankful for these young men and young women who have been willing to come and take a stand and show whose side they're on. I like showing whose side I'm on. Praise the Lord. We're gonna let Brother Tony sing one more for us, and then we'll go through this one or two times, and we'll let you be dismissed, amen. Sing for us, Brother Anthony.
Praise him, praise him. Praise him in the morning, praise him in the new. Praise him, praise him. Praise him when the sun goes down. Say, praise him, praise him. Praise him in the morning, praise him in the new time. Praise him, praise him. Praise him when the sun goes down. You better praise him, praise him. Praise him in the morning, praise him in the new time. Praise him, praise him. Praise him when the sun goes down. Well, serve him, serve him. Serve him in the morning, serve him in the new time. Serve him, serve him. Serve him when the sun goes down. Won't you love him, love him? Love him, love him in the morning, love him in the new time. Love him, love him. Love him when the sun goes down. Praise him, praise him, praise him. Praise him, say, praise him. Praise him in the morning, praise him in the new time. Praise him, say, praise him. Praise him when the sun goes down. Everybody will be happy, will be happy. Oh, then we will shout and sing our praise, and everybody will be happy over there. Say, everybody will be happy, will be happy. Oh, then we will shout and sing our praise, and everybody will be happy over there. There's a happy land promised over on the great beyond, where the Savior nurtures to glory's sake. Where the selfless born and share our banner with him. Everybody will be happy over there. Be happy, be happy. Oh, then we will shout and sing our praise through the never-ending haze. Everybody will be happy over there. We shall sing the praise through the never-ending haze. Everybody will be happy over there. Say, everybody will be happy, will be happy. Oh, then we will shout and sing our praise through the never-ending haze. Everybody will be happy over there. Ah, fly away, oh, then. Fly away, oh, then. Hey, ah, fly away, oh, then. Ah, fly away, oh, then. What a mighty God we serve. Say, what a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him, heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. Let me say, what a mighty God we serve. Say, what a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him, heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. Say, what a mighty God we serve. Oh, what a mighty God we serve. Angels bow before him, heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve. I'm one of them, I'm one of them. I'm so glad that I can say I'm one of them. I'm one of them. I'm one of them, one of them. I'm so glad that I can say I'm one of them. Oh, I'm one of them. I'm one of them. I'm so glad that I can say I'm one of them. I'm one of them, I'm one of them. I'm so glad that I can say I'm one of them. I'm so glad that I can say I'm one of them. Everybody say, we will be happy over there. We will be happy, oh, then. We will shout and sing our praise through the never-ending haze. Everybody say, we will be happy over there. One more time. Everybody will be happy, will be happy.
We'll be happy over there. We will shout and sing our praises through the never-ending ages. Everybody will be happy over there. There's a happy land of promise over on the great beyond. So forth. Everybody will be happy over there. Well, everybody will be happy. Everybody will be happy. We'll be happy over there. We will shout and sing our praises through the never-ending ages. Everybody will be happy over there. Be happy over there. We will shout and sing our praises through the never-ending ages. Everybody will be happy over there. Little Moses. Heard a fearless man and asleep. You have heard a story told of three being chosen. And a Jonah and a Will you often see? There are many, many others in the Bible. I should like to meet them all I do for them. My Lord will surely let us meet him in that meeting in the air. There is going to be a meeting in the air. In that sweet, sweet by-and-by. I am going to meet you, meet you over there. In that hole beyond the sky. Search, seeking, you will hear. Never heard my voice appear. Till be glorious, I do declare. God's own son will be the leading one. In that meeting in the air. Oh, there is going to be a meeting in the air. In that sweet, sweet by-and-by. There is going to be you, meet you over there. In that hole beyond the sky. Search, seeking, you will hear. Never heard my voice appear. Till be glorious, I do declare. God's own son will be the leading one. In that meeting in the air. Well, I'm going all the way just to see him. Oh, I'm going all the way just to see him. Oh, I'm going all the way just to see him. The one who suffered and died for me. Well, I'm going all the way just to see him. Oh, I'm going all the way just to see him. Oh, I'm going all the way just to see him. The one who suffered and died for me. I've got my mind made up and I won't turn back. Cause I want to see my Jesus someday. I've got my mind made up and I won't turn back. Cause I want to see my Jesus someday. I've got my mind made up and I won't turn back. Cause I want to see my Jesus someday. I've got my mind made up and I won't turn back. Cause I want to see my Jesus someday. Oh, if I were. I'd stay no longer with you. Goodbye, the lancer of sin. I'd stay no longer with you. Made up my mind, go God's way the rest of my life. Made up my mind, go God's way the rest of my life. Well, born, born, born again. Thank God, I'm born again. Born, born, born again. Thank God, I'm born again. Say, born, born, born again. Thank God, I'm born again. Born, born, born again. Thank God, I'm born again. Born of the water, spirit in the blood. Thank God, I'm born again. Say, born of the water, spirit in the blood. Thank God, I'm born again. One more time. Born of the water, spirit in the blood. Thank God, I'm born again. I've got my mind made up and I won't turn back. Cause I want to see my Jesus someday. I've got my mind made up and I won't turn back. Cause I want to see my Jesus someday. Well, victory is mine. Victory is mine. Victory today is mine. I told Satan, get thee behind. Say, victory today is mine. Oh, victory is mine. Victory is mine. Victory today is mine. I told Satan, get thee behind. Victory today is mine. Oh, I said, "Joy is mine." Say, "Joy is mine." Joy today is mine. I told Satan, get thee behind. Cause joy today is mine. Oh, joy is mine. Joy is mine. Joy today is mine. I told Satan, get thee behind. Oh, joy today is mine. Victory. Victory is mine. Oh, victory is mine. Victory today is mine. I told Satan, get thee behind. Victory today is mine. The Holy Ghost is mine. The Holy Ghost is mine. The Holy Ghost today is mine. I told Satan, get thee behind. The Holy Ghost today is mine. Say, victory is mine. Victory is mine. Oh, victory today is mine. I told Satan, get thee behind. Victory today is mine. I am thinking of a rapture in our blessed home. When the rain...